Hello and good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Abington Board of Selectmen Meeting, December 11th, 2023. The time being 6:30 PM. I would like to call the Board of Selectmen Meeting to order. And as we always do with tradition, we start with a Pledge of Allegiance. So please join us and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And after the Pledge of Allegiance, please continue standing for a moment of silence for two Abington residents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Paul F. Levitt, 93, passed away on November 19th, 2023. Paul served in the Navy after completing his education. After being discharged from the Navy, he pursued a career as a linotype operator until his retirement in 1992. Following his retirement, he worked part-time as a school custodian at Woodsdale Elementary School in Abington for nine years. He was an avid Red Sox fan and loved gardening and puttering around outside and having many other hobbies. He will deeply be missed by all who knew him. And please continue standing. John Walsh, age 65, passed away on November 20th, 2023. He was a Democratic activist remembered as a political genius by many. He was a graduate of Princeton University. He owned the independent insurance agency in Abington for many years and served on the Board of Selectmen from 1983 to 1993. He was known for his grassroots political campaigning and ran multiple successful political campaigns. He served as Chair of the Massachusetts Democrat Party from 2007 to 2013. His optimism, passion, and never-ending belief in people made the world a better place. He will be deeply missed. Please observe a moment of silence for John and Paul. Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda is public announcements. We'll start with the Board. Mr. Donovan?
Just briefly, Mr. Chairman, just to make an announcement that on this Saturday at Walmart between 8:00 AM and noon time, the police officers and the firefighters will be there for the Christmas toy drive. So if you're in and about that area, if you could kindly swing by and donate a toy that will be used for the needy children of Abington. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Ms. Jesper?
I have two announcements. I want to remind everyone that at the Abington Senior Center this Thursday is the Ugly Sweater Party for our seniors, starting, I believe, at 11 o'clock. And also at the Abington Senior Center, we are also having a giving tree for our homebound seniors. So if you care to donate, please do.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Jesper. Mr. Chapin?
I don't know. Go ahead.
All right. I do have a couple. As it's listed on our agenda, there will be a presentation of Abington's Best Award to Coach James "Jim" Kelleher on Friday, December 22nd, 2023, at 6:45 PM at the Abington Middle High School. Jim, on that day, there will be the boys and the girls and boys' basketball game will be done in between. This will be a great opportunity for us in the town, right before Christmas, to celebrate Coach Kelleher on his 50 amazing years coaching in Abington. He was also a teacher at Abington High School, and he retired a couple of years ago. He's been, honestly, such an inspiration to people in town, a father figure to many, and just an all-around amazing person. And actually, it was Selectman Tim Chapin. We offer, the town offers Abington's Best to residents and town employees who best exemplify what makes Abington so great. And honestly, Coach Kelleher is so deserving of this. So please come to the girls and boys' basketball game on April, I mean, not April, excuse me, December 22nd at 6:45 PM at the Abington Middle High School gym. My gosh, I'm fumbling everywhere today. And we also received a recognition from the Executive Office of Veteran Services to Adam Gunn, our Abington's Veteran Services Officer. This came from Governor Maura Healey and Lieutenant Governor Kimberly Driscoll. I do want to read this because Adam is so fantastic for our town. "The Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Veteran Services. Be it hereby known to all that the Executive Office of Veteran Services office is sincerest. Congratulations to Adam Gunn in recognition of your exceptional service and dedication to the veteran community and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The Secretary extends its very best wishes to express the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors, given this 10th day of November 2023, offered by John Santiago, Secretary of Veteran Services." And this goes without saying that, you know, Adam is an absolute asset to this town and does an absolutely fantastic job and is adored by many. And one more, if you'll just indulge me, one more moment. We did receive a message from the Abington Celebrates, and I do want to read that for you now. "Thank you for a weekend of holiday cheer, from ugly sweaters to a huge Christmas celebration at The Grove to a joyful jazz holiday concert finale, along with a breakfast and pub picks with Santa, bowling tournament, and a historical exhibit thrown in. This weekend was, as the Grinch would say, fabulous! Nothing this past weekend would have been possible without the help, dedication, love, and support of all of you. The Abington Celebrates Committee would like to thank Kelly Johnson and the DPW for their tireless work at The Grove. We also extend a huge thank you to our electrician extraordinaire Dan Howland for lighting the bridge and bandstand. Thank you, Abington Fire, for bringing Santa to The Grove in a big way. Thanks to the Abington Police for traffic detail and Harlow. Everybody loves Harlow. The Gingerbread Cabin would not have been possible without the decorating duo Judy O'Brien and Nancy Reed. Shout out to Josh and his team at Cullavan Landscape for providing hayrides through The Grove. Thank you to Santa, Mike Russell, Grinch, Alex Haggerty, Buddy the Elf, Rudy Childs, Ed Levin, Roger Atkinson, Don English, Sean Riley, Kevin Whalen, and congratulations again to Coach Kel as our 2023 Lighting of the Bandstand nominee. Thank you also. Thank you also goes out to our Christmas weekend community partners and volunteers, the Jeff Coombs Foundation, Abington Summer Concerts, Abington's Lions, PAC 41 Scouts, Father and Son Trains, United Church of Christ, First Baptist Church, Friends of Abington Dog Park, Abington Copes, the DAR, Abington Choir, Abington Depot, Dance Dimensions, Boston Taekwondo, and Abington Cam. We all wish you a safe and happy holiday season. Abington Celebrates is now taking a long winter's nap until 2024. Happy holidays from Abington Celebrates Board of Directors, Michelle Coyle, Nancy Reed, Judy O'Brien, Ken Coyle, Reverend Dr. Christie Coburn, Bob Manning, and Christie Coombs." And last public announcement, I just want to wish all of our residents, our Jewish residents, a very happy and safe, happy Hanukkah this year. And really, I believe tonight is the fifth night of Hanukkah. So I hope, you know, there's a lot of hope and peace during your Hanukkah season this year. And lastly, this is our last meeting before the New Year. I want to wish everyone a very safe and healthy Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. So that being said, we'll move on to next agenda items, public comments. Any public comments from the audience? Right, hearing none. All right. We will go to next agenda items, public appointments. We have request to vote, a request to vote on joint appointment by Board of Selectmen and Board of Assessors to fill vacancy on Board of Assessors until April election. Let's see, time being 6:40 PM. The Board of Assessors are here with us. Would like to join into a joint session with the Abington Board of Assessors. Scott, would we need a motion from us or just?
You don't need a motion, and they don't have a quorum anyways. But you only need the remaining or the members, so you're fine to go in and make your appointment.
Okay, perfect. All right. Thank you. All right. We do have one applicant for the Board of Assessors position until April election. We have Joseph Shea. Joseph Shea, you're in the audience. Did you want to get up and say some words?
When I heard that Ann Walsh, I mean, sorry, Ann had retired, Kent had retired from the Board, there's only four or five months, there's only four months really left until the election. I felt that I should, I have served as an elected assessor for over six years in the past and offer my services to help the Board during the next few months. I have been certified by the Department of Revenue as an assessor, qualified assessor, a couple of times, actually. And so I have experienced both serving as an elected assessor and also working in the Assessor's Office for 13 years. So I do not plan to run for election at the end of April. So I will not plan to run for that seat. So I request your consideration and appointing me. Any questions?
Any questions from the Board? All right. Well, definitely, Joe, always, your resume speaks for itself, too, so.
Thank you.
I will entertain any motions.
Oh, we can do it by roll call. We've got Larry here, and since Larry is one of the sitting assessors, perhaps it'd be appropriate for him to go first. And we just take a roll call and write down the line, and whoever receives the most votes wins.
Sure. This is going to be difficult.
Larry, what say you?
Aye.
Aye, Larry's aye.
I vote for Joseph Shea.
All right, thank you.
I also vote.
Aye, the Chair votes aye. Mr. Chapin?
Aye.
All right, perfect. So that is.
Congratulations, Drew.
Congratulations. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you for stepping forward.
Okay.
You're dismissed.
Thank you, Larry. All right. Thank you. Next on public appointments, time being 6:43 PM. Request to change of manager, 10th District Brewery LLC, 748 Brockton Ave., from E. Patrick Eddy to Dana George. This is a public hearing, so I will have to hear any motions to open a public hearing.
Some of.
All right, motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's a second, all right. Any other motions to be heard? Hearing none. All right, all in favor to open the public hearing for the 10th District Brewery LLC? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Unanimous. All right, so we are now in the public hearing. Is anyone from the 10th District Brewery LLC here?
Yes.
All right, cool. Come on up, state your name and address, and what you're trying to do here?
My name is Dana George. I am the owner of 10th District Brewing located at 748 Brockton Ave. Simply looking to change the manager from a former partner who is no longer with the company, hasn't been, to myself.
All right, okay.
There's been no change. Dana's been there since day one. We've never had a problem with that, so.
Yeah, I don't see any.
Any specific questions?
No.
Doesn't seem any concerns from the town, so.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
All right, motion, close, all right. Any other motions to be heard? Hearing none.
Vote on the motion to close the hearing.
Oh, correct, yeah. So the motion in the second. All in favor to close the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Unanimous, okay. Now I will entertain any motions.
I'll make a motion to allow the change manager from E. Patrick Eddy to Dana George at 10th District Brewery Company.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chapin. Motion in the second. Any other motions to be heard? Hearing none. All in favor of request for change of management, 10th District Brewery LLC, 748 Brockton Ave., from E. Patrick Eddy to Dana George. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Unanimous.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great holiday.
You, too.
All right. All right, next on our public appointments, actually, right on time. 6:45 PM, request for common vehicular license for Harry's Place, 201 North Quincy Street. Harry Los, I'm sorry if I'm going to butcher their last name, Thought Hoary Manager.
Aye.
Oh, perfect, awesome. Trust me, I could mispronounce my own name. All right, I will entertain any motions to open the public hearing.
Some moved.
All right, some moved. Any other, is there a second?
A second.
All right, a second. Any other motions to be heard? Hearing none. All in favor to open the public hearing for Harry's Place?
Aye.
Aye, all right, all opposed? Unanimous, all right. The public hearing is open. Why don't you come on up and state your name and address, and what you want to do here?
Hello and good evening. My English is not perfect, but I'll try my best to be understandable for everybody. So I lived in Abington for 11 years. I owned Aroma Pizza for 11 years on the same street, 143 North Quincy. And because of my kids, I need to do like short hours. I have nobody to care my kids. I want to work like 7:00 to 3:00, so that way I have a little bit of time for my kids. So I want 201 North Quincy to be like breakfast and lunch and get away from the pizza place, which one is 11:00 to 11:00 as a parent to kids, so.
Sounds great.
It's just the same job, but different hours. It's nothing else.
That's what we're all looking for, changing up different hours.
Thank you, thank you.
And this is the old Two Gals location?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Awesome, awesome.
It used to be Chinese store, the Two Gals took over. I think they last for a year and a half.
Yeah.
And I knew the landlord, which one he calls me to take a look at the place, and if I can do something.
Yeah.
And finally, we agree on the lease, on the rent. I knew it, and it's a lot of money to spend. I did it. I did everything right. And then it's time to apply for the license, and we'll go from there.
Awesome, awesome.
Thank you.
You want to do, it's like a breakfast kind of lunch?
Yes.
Awesome, very cool. All right, awesome. Are there any other questions from the Board? I mean, we did receive a communication from the Building Department that gave us the green light. I spoke to the Public Health Agent the other day and gave us the green light. And as soon as you're ready to open for the inspection.
Yes.
With the approval, of course.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, so if there are no other questions or comments or anything from the public, I will entertain any motions to close the public hearing?
A move, we close the hearing.
Motion, is there a second? There's a second, all right. Any other motions? Hearing none. All right, all in favor to close the public hearing? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Unanimous. All right, I will entertain any motions for the vehicular license for Harry's Place.
A move, we approve the license as applied.
A second.
All right, thank you. And there's a second. Any other motions to be heard? All right, hearing none. All in favor of request for common vehicular license for Harry's Place, 201 North Quincy Street?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Unanimous, all right. Awesome, congratulations.
I want to thank you, and I appreciate all the help and effort, and I will try my best.
Awesome, thank you, thank you. Let us know when you're having the grand opening.
Yes.
I'd love to come by.
We're going to do like soft opening.
Okay.
Because since I came to America 24 years ago, I only worked pizza places and stuff like that. I never did breakfast in my life.
Yeah.
But I have family, which one wants place. I'm going to learn there.
Going to go there and learn?
Learn still for a little bit from everybody, and I'll put everything together and do the best.
Awesome.
Sounds great.
Your pizza's fantastic, by the way.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Is that the line of breakfast pizza, by the way?
We can do breakfast pizza.
Just for you.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
You, too.
All right. Next on our agenda is action discussion items, request for appointment to Zoning Board of Appeals Voting Member, Robert Manning and Andrew Levalt.
Excuse me, Chair?
Yes.
Andrew Levalt has withdrawn his name.
Okay.
So you can form me up.
All right.
Mr. Manning.
Thank you, Scott. All right, and I see we have Bob Manning in the audience. Did you want to say anything?
No, I'll say something.
Go for it.
Good evening. Robert Manning, 34 Orange Street. I'm applying for the voting member of the zoning board. I've already been a sitting member for four years as an alternate. With Mr. Kovacs's retirement, I thought we needed to get a voting member, so we had three solid voting members on the board. I would encourage the Selectmen to consider adding a fourth voting member, so we could always have a vote, maybe, if we could do that. I don't know if that's possible, but I'm here tonight just to apply for that open space because I just want to make sure we have three voting members on the zoning board as a list.
Bob, forgive me, I think I missed it, but how long have you been on the zoning?
This is my fourth year.
Okay.
I was reappointed last year.
Okay.
So I'm in my fourth year as an alternate.
Okay, perfect. Are there any questions or comments from the Board?
No, I will make a motion to appoint Robert Manning as a full voting member of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
All right, Mr. Donovan has made that motion. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, there's a second. Any other motions to be heard? All right, hearing none. All in favor to approve request for appointment to Zoning Board of Appeals Voting Member, Robert Manning?
Aye.
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 All against? Unanimous, all right. Congratulations, Bob. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I do appreciate it. Merry Christmas to you all.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Bob.
We'll see you on our phone.
Next on our action discussion items is vote to approve annual license, yeah, I'm right, vote to approve annual license renewals. Scott.
It's all on you.
It's all on you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Sure, go ahead.
As it relates to the licenses before us, we have them grouped. I think it'd be easy if we just look at the list, consider the list in its entirety, but I'm going to make a motion, but I want to exclude, because I want to speak about, there was a couple of them here that we have issues with, but let me go through that.
Correct.
So let me make a motion that we approve the renewal of all licenses as currently listed, excepting Powerhouse Nutrition at 493 Washington Street, Tiffy's Restaurant and Bar at 800 Brockton Avenue, and a lodging license at 96 Railroad Street. The motion then is to approve those licenses that's on the list, inclusive of the alcoholic licenses, the lodging licenses, the livery licenses, the Class 1-2 licenses, and accepting the ones that I've just iterated, which I would like to handle separately. So the question runs on the motion that I just offered.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Donovan. Mr. Donovan has made that motion on the floor. Is there any, is there a second to the motion?
A second.
All right, there's a second. Is there any other motions to be heard about these licenses? All right, hearing none. All in favor of Mr. Donovan's motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, unanimous. All right.
Okay, in relation to Powerhouse Nutrition at 493 Rockland Street, based on the information that we had before us from the Building Inspector, that he has made several attempts to the business, to notify the business owner to come into compliance, no action has been taken by the business owner. So I guess in this particular case.
This is Josh.
It appears that they've made the application for renewal, is that correct, Scott?
Yeah.
Okay, so we can handle this one or two ways. In order, when it comes to renewal of license time, you have to go through the normal process, which would be to renew it. And then you, as a separate issue, you would have to have a notice to show cause as to why they've been, they would be notified. You'd have a public hearing notice to show cause as to why the license shouldn't be suspended or revoked. What I would suggest in this particular case is that we empower the town manager to, at his discretion, the police chief, fire chief, and building commissioner, to sit down with the individuals and indicate, have them come in for a meeting. If they fail to come into that meeting, then I would suggest that the town manager put, give them due notice at a next scheduled meeting in January to give a notice to show cause as to why they should, their license should not be suspended or revoked. In this particular case, it disturbs me that the management at Powerhouse Nutrition has taken it upon themselves to ignore the Building Commissioner. Well, if they want to maintain a business in this community, I do solemnly assure you they are going to have to pay attention. And if they don't want to pay attention, then they will not be doing business in the community. So with that said, my first motion will be to authorize the town manager to have them come in and, at his discretion with the appropriate department heads, to explain to them the errors of their ways. If they fail to respond to the town manager, then I, the part of the motion is going to be that he mark it up for a hearing, give them notice, give them proper notice that at our meeting in January, the notice would be to show up, to consider whether your license should be suspended or revoked. That's my first motion as it relates to Powerhouse.
All right, there's a motion on the floor from Mr. Donovan regarding Powerhouse. Let me make sure I have that. Powerhouse Nutrition LLC. Is there a second to Mr. Donovan's motion?
A second.
All right, there is a second for Mr. Donovan's motion. Is there any other motions to be heard? Did you want to go these one at a time?
I'm going to do them one at a time, yes.
Okay.
So the motion, just so I, I just want to reiterate the motion again. It's a motion to renew, subject to everything I've just indicated, which Scott has been scribbling furiously, so I'm sure he's got it all down.
All right, perfect. All right, so I will, all in favor of Mr. Donovan's motion pertaining to Powerhouse Nutrition LLC, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, unanimous?
All right, as it relates to Tiffy's Restaurant and Bar at 800 Brockton Avenue, this concerns me a lot more. Here we have an issue where the business owner, number one, did not meet the deadline, and issues arose at the business during the weekend. We have, I had asked for and received a copy of the police report that they had an incident up there on Saturday, December 2nd, whereas when the police department was called up there, they observed well over 300 people exiting the establishment. They congregated in the parking lot, they were observed, according to the police report, as people waiting in line to get in there. They observed nips and red solo cups on the ground. When both the police and fire department got up there, the management did cooperate, however, they're in violation of several factors. One, unovercrowding. I cannot, my wildest dream, understand why a licensed holder would allow that many people into an establishment that small. It's, quite frankly, is a recipe for disaster. I feel very strongly on this, and in this particular case, it goes further that the police department had to call for mutual aid from surrounding towns because of the number of people up there. This isn't fair to the people that live up there. If they, according to the report, that the vehicles, when they were leaving the parking lot, stringed out of there, they accelerated, the engine noise and what have you, that's not fair to the people that live up there. So again, I would say to Tiffy's Restaurant and Bar, if you want to do business in the town of Abington, understand one thing, you are going to have to come into compliance. And again, I would offer that we renew it on the basis that the town manager, as I said in the previous one, at his discretion, have a meeting of the fire police and the building commissioner with himself, and explain to them how serious is, at least that I consider this issue. this issue, and that if they either A) fail to comply with the request to meet, or B) if they do comply and promise, you know, that they will go forward and make amends, and something happens again, I don't care what that something is. I would like a notice to show cause for them to come up here as to why their license shouldn't be suspended or revoked. And I think we have to send that message. We have liquor license regulations that have been in effect since 2001. I was on the board when we originally, took a lot of time to delineate what is expected as us, as from, as the licensing authority, and what's expected of the establishments. On Taffy's, I can assure you, I can go through the liquor license regulations and show you how they violated numerous provisions of the, of the license itself, which in and of itself, if after a hearing, if that is in fact found to be truthful, that is a violation that could impede their license. So, with that said, I make that motion that we renew it, with the idea, as I just delineated, that they come in and if they either, A) if they either fail to come into this meeting, or B) if they come in and promise they'll, they'll correct it, and something happens in the future, I want them in here, because if something happens up there, we're going to be negligent, because we didn't take action. So that's my motion.
All right, a motion on the floor by Mr. Donovan for Taffy's Restaurant and Bar. Is there a motion, excuse me, is there a second to Mr. Donovan's motion?
Oh, a second.
All right, and a second. Any other, any discussion or other motions to be heard regarding this, regarding this matter, Taffy's Restaurant and Bar?
Yeah, I would, I agree with Kevin 100%. I would make sure that they understand that, I mean, I'm reading seven different calls for service from our understaffed police department up there this year. One more, and I would want them in here, like Kevin said, because that's, that's a neighborhood, you know what I mean? That's, there's neighbors up there, and they can't be doing that, and we have to make sure they're not.
Any other comments or questions from the board? And to piggyback off of Mr. Donovan, Mr. Chapin, I completely agree. You know, we want to be as friendly as we can to businesses here in town, but there are rules that businesses need to follow and make sure, and especially Taffy's being so close to the Green Street neighborhood, this is, this is upsetting that this has gotten this far. But I, you know, I'm in favor of Mr. Donovan's motion, and so with that being said, there is no other motions to be heard on Taffy's Restaurant and Bar. I will now take a vote on Mr. Donovan's motion for Taffy's Restaurant and Bar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Unanimous.
Okay, lastly, on 96 Railroad Street. Again, we have an issue where the, in this particular case, repairs to the fire escape, as of, I'm assuming today, that those repairs have yet to be made. Again, I would offer the same motion. I think, you know, the owners have to understand, especially in a fire escape situation at a lodging house, I don't know how much more common sense that can be. And for any owner to disregard that, I think they're putting themselves, obviously their tenants, in themselves in peril, and I want to make sure the town is not put in peril, that we follow up with this. So I would make that signed motion that we renew it under the provisions that, again, the town manager can, at his discretion with the fire police and the building commissioners, to have them come in, and yet again, if they fail to come in, or if they promise to do it and they don't do it, then again, I would like them up here for a notice to show cause as to why we shouldn't revoke their license.
All right, there is a motion on the floor for Mr. Donovan for Yazzer Sale Lodging Home, 96 Railroad Street. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, there's a second by Ms. Justburg. Any other motions or discussions to be heard from the board? All right, hearing none. I will take up the motion by Mr. Donovan, the motion on the floor by Mr. Donovan, Yazzer Sale Lodging Home, 96 Railroad Street. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Unanimous. All right, awesome, yes. Scott, if you could follow up with these three license holders, and then, and then get back to us when you hopefully do hear back, and then we will go from there. Thank you. Next, action discussion items, vote to update Town of Abington financial management policies and objectives. As you'll see in your packet, we have the Town of Abington, Massachusetts, financial management policies and objectives. Right now, the Town of Abington is operating off of policies that's been enacted since 2006. We haven't updated them since 2006. This is a great opportunity, I think, for us, as, you know, times change and, you know, needs and things change, it's always good to, to update the policies that we have. And I know our town manager was very diligent and looking to update these. So in here, let's see, I did, Scott and I talked about, I introduced section one and two, the introduction and purpose and budget policy, and then Scott and I, we kind of merged the two together to create this, this financial management policies draft here before the board. Is there any comments or questions or discussions from the board? Scott, would you, because you were a huge part of this, so any, any comments or?
No, just, you know, again, these are just updates of, of policies that we do currently have. And then more guidelines, just to help, to make sure that, you know, as this board changes or as the finance committee changes, as I come and go, or people come and go, that everybody's still sort of following these same guidelines as far as, you know, what, what we're doing with our, with the town's money.
Yeah, perfect. And I know when we were talking about charter review and what suggestions we want, wanted to prevent, not prevent, to present to the charter review committee, this is where, you know, we kind of put in, talking about what the board of selectmen, you know, roles and kind of objectives for the overall budget for the pursuing years. So that's great, and that's where we inserted this, into this financial policies and objectives draft. Again, I'll bring it back to the board. Is there anything else to be, to be heard, or comments or questions? All right, hearing none. I will entertain any motions on the update to the Town of Abington financial management policies and objectives.
Move and approve.
All right, motion and the second?
A second.
All right. Any other motions to be heard? All right, hearing none. All in favor of updating, the vote to update Town of Abington financial management policies and objectives as presented here tonight? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, unanimous? Awesome. All right. And Scott, if we could get these on, up on the town website, under the selectmen policies, that'd be great.
I'm sure we can do that.
Yeah. And just so we're not confusing residents too, if we could take down the former policy, so then we just have this one up on the town website. Next action discussion item is to vote to authorize the town manager to send a letter to the EEA Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, supporting the New England Development MEPA Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act application. Scott, did you want to elaborate more on this?
Oh, actually, I think you had words with the SRA, or I think I'll defer to Kevin Donovan.
Yeah, essentially what this is, is now that the three communities have approved the zoning changes that allows the MESS developer to rezon and build at Union Point, there's now, it kicks off the state review process, the MEPA process, if you will. And the, the developer has made that filing, and they're looking for letters of support, again, from the three communities. The first thing the MEPA people had asked the developer was, have you had any public meetings on this at the local level? It's, yeah, only about 100. So this would be to authorize the town manager to indicate that the board of selectmen, if we vote it is in favor, obviously, based on the town meeting vote and previous discussions and positions on the matter, so that that can be recorded in the, their presentation before the state and made a part of the public record. As a result, I would make a motion that we authorize the town manager to send a letter to the folks at MEPA, or the state MEPA process, indicating that the Town of Abington has voted both by the board of selectmen and the residents of the town and town meeting assembled, that we're in favor of this project.
All right, thank you. There's a motion on the floor by Mr. Donovan to vote to authorize the town manager to send a letter to the EEA, supporting the New England Development MEPA application. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. A second by Ms. Justburg. Is there any other motions or discussions to be heard? All right, hearing none. All in favor of vote to authorize the town manager to send a letter to the EEA Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, supporting the New England Development MEPA Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act application. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, unanimous. Next on our agenda is town manager report and submission of the FY25 draft budget.
So I did drop one of those on all your desks, right in front of you. I won't read this verbatim, but basically this is our preliminary budget, and at this point, you know, it is very preliminary. We have asked the department heads to submit their, their budgets with the, with an eye towards level services, meaning that, you know, we want to continue to provide the services to the community that we have been providing, without any major increases in programming. That being said, we also recommend to the department heads that if there is a service or enhancement, enhancement to services or needs, that they feel is significant, and we should present to the community, and then I ask them to include that in their budget. What we don't have, and what we really haven't made any estimates on, are revenues and state aid, or any of those numbers. Right now, they're just, you know, we're considering them to be flat, and we get those updates more in January. The governor's budget will come in at some point, and that, in late January, probably. I get constant updates through the MMA on, on forecasts and what they expect, but it really won't be until January before we start honing in on some of these. But what, you know, some, at this point, we are above $1,009,000. You'll see that the, you know, the department head request line and the town manager recommendation is pretty much the same, with the deficit of $1,009,000 plus. That will change as we go forward. I don't expect that the, you know, obviously, the idea is to get that down to balanced, and we will get there, but there'll be a lot of, you know, there's just a lot of work to do in the interim. Right now, you know, some of the biggest drivers in this budget this year is obviously waste collection. I'm looking at about a 10% plus increase. There are some requests in here for a couple additional DPW positions. There's some requests in here from the police department to start a cadet program, which would help with our recruitment issues. There's also, you know, police and fire at the last part of that three-year contract that we did. We're holding social bo tech in the schools at like 4%, but we really have no idea where that's going to come in at right now. Health insurance, 7% plus. We had a big hit with Plymouth County Retirement, that led $326,000 to the budget. Part of that was the 3% COLA increase, plus it was an additional 2% voted by member units. This is the first year that we're required to pay our share, the town's part of the grant towards the Holbrook Regional Emergency Communication Center. Now, that was a five-year grant. The first three years, the state was paying 100%. This is the first year that we paid 50%, so that's going to add $185,000 plus to police and fire budgets. Next year, there'll be another $100,000 increase, and that'll be the final year of the five-year agreement, and not sure where we'll be going from there. I think it's been a very successful program. We've received a lot of other grants outside of that, not to mention $150,000 generator that's sitting out here, and a lot of money that has gone into computers and, and communication equipment. And I think that we'll also see, as we start, the nice part is just negotiating that next cycle of grants, or next cycle with. Holbrook will be time that we're looking for grant money to outfit the new fire station, so I'm sure that we're going to see some, some good opportunities there. So it's important, again, to remember that this is just a working document in the very beginning of this process. I've also included in this our capital improvement plan. You have a sheet that's very hard to read, but that is our FY25 plan, and there's about $1,006,000 in there that we hope to spend, use free cash for. We don't anticipate borrowing any more money for any projects this year. We may ask the board as to authorize us to borrow for a new fire engine, that I don't anticipate we would be able to actually receive for two years, so it wouldn't actually affect the FY25, maybe not even FY26. And then in the bottom of this, you'll see that we have our schedule. I will ask you folks to open a town meeting warrant on your January 8th meeting, and we'll probably close it somewhere around February 12th at that meeting. Planning board can then begin their hearings. Finance committee hearings have already begun. They've already started meeting and started reviewing the budgets. And March 22nd, the finance committee recommendation should be to the town clerk. And our annual town meeting will be on Monday, April 1st, 2024.
Question. The fire and police expenses, that the 50% drop that you, that's exactly what that was?
That is because of.
No, the highway expenses dropped, like 70 grand. What, what are we expecting to, why did that drop?
Um, I don't, I haven't met with DPW yet, so I don't have the answer. And, and, you know, come, you know, January, February, and March, or we'll bring department heads in, or not all of them, but we'll bring most of the department heads in after they've gone through the finance committee.
And the jump in highway salaries, that's the extra positions they're asking for?
At this point, they're looking to add two more laborers, yeah.
Scott, the 1.9, does this include the contractual obligations, contractual obligations?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. It includes, that's inclusive of contractual obligations debt.
But that, that's assuming flat state aid, which.
It's assuming a lot of things.
Hopefully it wouldn't be, yeah.
Yeah, revenue forecast, state aid, chapters, I know that.
Yeah, it hasn't come in flat in years, so hopefully we're not going to start now.
Last thing we need is for it to be flat this year, next year.
This is just the first iteration.
First round.
Yeah, it's, you know, it gels over the process of time, obviously, when the governor hasn't filed House One yet, we don't know what the retirement assessment is, we don't know what the health insurance is, we, there's a lot of unknowns, so you have to go it based on assumptions right now. And those will all gel together, as they do every year, so I wouldn't get too excited about the deficit right now.
Yeah, the only, the reason, the reason we're doing this now is, so according to the town charter, like Scott and I, we're talk, we're talking, just the, the process of presenting this to us before going to finance committee in January and stuff, so there's a 30-day window, or there's a 30-day requirement before giving, given to the finance committee, so that's why we're, we're talking about this right now, even in the very, very draft stage, so, but, more to come.
Whenever we get, and this is until probably January, February, when you, I'd be curious when we do the local receipts, if we could have an actual, and then, an actual, and then based on what the assumption is for budgetary purposes, so in other words, so I get an idea on what we actually receive versus what the percentage we're going to figure in. versus what the percentage we're gonna figure in.
And Scott, I know this is, it's, it's, it's in the budget and it was approved last year as well, at annual, at the annual town meeting. But I just wanted to follow up on the, the town planner.
Yeah, so I'm actually meeting tomorrow with a couple members of the planning board. We do, we have posted the position. We have received a couple of applications, so I'm gonna ask, I did already ask for the planning board to assign a couple people to work with Liz and I to kind of go through those applications and, and meet with these folks and see what we come up with, so.
Right, thank you, Scott.
It is still in there. And then if you don't have any more budget questions, there are a couple other.
Any, any more, any more budget questions? Go ahead, Scott.
So January's schedule, I know you're gonna set that. I'm assuming it will be the eighth. Griffins, the Abington Affordable Housing Trust has reached out to Griffins. They do have a, a lot of land down there that South Shore Habitat and Humanity has shown some interest in, in building a project house on. The Affordable Housing Trust would like to sponsor it. Ultimately, it's going to be up to, up to this board to make that decision. So I, I'm not sure, I, I get the sense that Griffins might not be fully in favor of it, but I think it would be important to have those two boards come and meet with you on their first meeting in January to sort of discuss it.
Yeah, I know a couple of months ago, the Griffins Dairy Committee did send us a letter that they did not want to see any building on the Griffins Dairy property. So I think, I think that's appropriate for us to meet with the Griffins Dairy and the Affordable Housing, just to get, see where people are at. And like you were saying, at the end of the day, it is ultimately our decision. But being an open and transparent government as we are, I think it'd be great to have the three committees have a dialogue.
Yeah, there's nothing more fun than that.
I know, right? That's what we all signed up for.
And then I, I will also probably be calling for an executive session on that first January meeting just for an update on some legal issues.
Thank you, Scott. Is there anything else in the town manager report?
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's it? Oh, wow, very short one.
We've been a little budget oriented.
All right, oh, absolutely, and thank you, thank you. This is, this is great. Very good reads for us. All right, next on our, our last, last agenda item. The last agenda item is to set meeting schedule for January through April. And as accordance with our selectmen handbook and the town charter, we do meet every, for every month, we meet every second Monday and every fourth Monday, and in accordance, so looking at the calendar and working with holidays, making sure we're not meeting on a federal holiday, the, the dates would be Jan, so I entertain, hear any motions for our meeting schedule to be January 8th and 22nd, February 12th and 26th, March 11th and 25th, April 8th and 22nd. And again, that is, that is the second and fourth Monday of every mon, of every month.
Those are set by you, not us, you don't need a motion.
And there's no holidays, okay.
All right?
You don't need a motion.
We don't?
No. To set the meeting?
All right, I just wanted to make, I just wanted to run it by the, run it by the board before, just to make sure everyone was all right with it. All right, perfect. Okay, that being said, I will entertain any motions to adjourn.
Some.
All right, there was a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
A second. Any other motions to be heard? Hearing none. All in favor of a motion to adjourn? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, a time being 7:24 PM.